Anybody hear us?
Can I hear you now, Mike?
Apologize. What we did is established a forum. We have no added agenda items. We read the legal notice. Do people want it read again? I think it's been read before, but just to be safe, I read it again. Now we're up to public participation. We have the items on our agenda, but the question for the audience is, does anyone want to raise something that is not on the agenda?
Yes.
Could you identify yourself?
Landrick Rukowski, 36 Sullivan Farms Road. And this is just, this does not have to do with anything that's being discussed. It's been, it's something that's come to mind over the past few meetings about things that have been said when the public wants to make their opinion felt. You know, at the beginning of a meeting, I heard, well, you shouldn't ask repetitive questions. Hey, if somebody has a question, they should be able to ask it. And the one that was most disturbing to me was when somebody said, this is a waste of time. This is taking too long. I'm sorry. It is not a waste of time for anybody in public or the people presenting to ask questions as much as they want. We're taking our time out of our busy day to do that. So I would please ask you that you respect our comments and don't make us feel like we're wasting your time because it's not a waste of our time.
And may I have this name, please? Could you repeat your name, please?
Frank Rukowski, 36 Sullivan Farms.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else under public participation? In the room, through Zoom, is there anybody who would like to put something in under public participation? Okay. Then we will move on to approval of minutes. We have the meeting minutes we got with our packet. Does anybody have any corrections that they feel need to be made? Okay, then a motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes to regular meeting 1805 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. The minutes are approved. Proceed of applications. Do you have any applications? Okay, so we have no applications to put on the record. Performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, road acceptance. We have Calmar. You are going to brief us.
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up. There was some discussion at the previous two meetings about the status of the project and sidewalks. And I think I mentioned the last meeting, we don't have money, you know, the bond that we're holding related to the sidewalk, but it was part of what was required by the DOT. So it was included in what they did with them. And our understanding is that as of last week, the DOT has started the process to call that bond. So they'll be going through the process of notifying and ultimately figuring out what needs to happen. So we've gotten a couple of emails and people that have called in about it. So the DOT is on it as of about last week. So hopefully it will be rectified.
Have they given any kind of official status as to where the project stands?
My understanding is that a representative from Calmar, who is newly on the project toward the East Windsor facility and Manchester facility, they want to get both of those back under, bit underway, I guess, but they're still sort of working out the details of what I guess probably brought it to a halt. But, you know, they're still engaged for what that stands for, what that's worth, I don't know, but so hopefully we'll know in a little while. I think they were working with Rand to figure out what they need to do to get that rolling again. So they're not totally walked away.
We appreciate the update. Any other questions from the board?
Mike had the main one.
New public here. First item on the agenda is PZ 2021-22. It's a special use permit for 7A Pasco Drive. The applicant is here via Zoom. I assume you would be willing to give us an overview, Mr. DePuy?
Can you hear me all right?
Great.
Okay, I wasn't sure I had the right connection, but right spot. I thank you very much. My name is Arini DePuy. And I'm the owner of building seven at Pasco Commons. I built the building in in 1998 and moved my business there towards a distinction from East Hartford. And kept the business there for a number of years and I sold the business in 2018 and the current owner of the business opted to move to Simsbury in early 2020. And the unit 7A where we house the the business has been vacant for over 16 months at this point. And looking to see if I can make some changes in it to make it more rentable. The building that I have at Pasco Commons is a, is the only three-story building in the complex. The lower level is a ground level that houses offices. The first floor, also a ground level coming in from a different side of the building is where we housed the business towards a distinction for almost 23 years. It's about 2,400 square feet total. And then above that floor is the second floor, which is presently offices, better known as a unit 7B, and that's about 2,000 square feet. And what I'm looking to do is combine both office and residential into that one unit 7A. Whereas we would have two-thirds of the living space or residential space at approximately 1,500 square feet. And then the balance of the one-third of the office space. And that would be about 850 square feet. And then would be, those two areas would be divided by a common wall and a door to allow passage from the residential side into the business side. As I know, Pasco Commons is already zoned for both business and residential. So that doesn't seem to be a real issue. And I know that in speaking with Paul Benson, he has told me that he had applied for two special use permits to convert business into a combination of business and residential. One permit was granted back in early 2000. And then the second permit, which was granted by the board, was in April of 2012. So the, I think when I sent in the application, I sent in a floor plan. I don't know, you've got a copy of that to look at, but it's home drawn. I don't know if you want to take a look at it. If you have it in front of you, do you have it?
I do.
Yes.
And kind of lays out the kind of what I envisioned. It's only my rendition. It's not a professional architect's rendition, but on the right-hand side, you can see where it's just the present form door of the second level, which is a ground level. Entrance would enter into the office section of the unit where there'd be a waiting area, restroom, and maybe a couple of offices. And then there'd be a common door through that divider wall, which would lead into the residential section, living room, couple of bedrooms, study, then a bathroom, laundry area, then a kitchen and dining area, then on the left-hand side, you can see there's a back door to the unit. And that leads out to a covered porch and then down a couple of steps onto the ground. So that's kind of what I envisioned based on the availability of square footage there. But what led me to approaching this thing is that I was watching a TV show after a while CBS had a a thing about Great American reshuffling and it had to do with COVID in the workplace and how people are now working from home and not commuting to office space any longer. And and I think the pandemic, the COVID situation is going to be a change in the workplace for a time to come, where folks will opt to be able to work from home. And just like we're doing a Zoom thing now in the previous meeting I did with the zoning board a couple of months ago, was all remote via Zoom and nobody was in town hall at that time. And so, so working from home is a, is a thing, I think it's here to stay and I know the states do it and state governments do it and county governments, city governments, major cities and small local communities like East Windsor. But there are other options available and major corporations have been offering this option to work from home. Amazon does it, American Express, Capital One, Facebook and Microsoft and the list goes on and on and on. And that's all well and good if you work for a government or if you work for a major corporation. But it doesn't take into consideration some folks that are sole proprietor, such as a, an accountant or a mechanical engineer or insurance, advertising, consultant, financial consultant. And where they don't have that option to be able to work from home. They can't invite people to their home to conduct business. And it's just not a comfortable or business-like environment. In fact, one of the tenants I had in the lower level was a psychiatrist. And she dealt with adolescents and she I had mentioned to her about what I was doing and she, she has since moved out and returned back to Florida, but I mentioned to her about having a unit where you could live in it and still conduct the business in it. And she thought that was very good because her clientele, she'd have to meet with them sometimes at six o'clock, seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night. That's some strange hours, certainly on weekends, when their, her clientele would have some issues. The parents would call her and make an appointment and she would leave her home in Enfield, drive down to the office, turn on the lights and lock the door and consult with her, with her patient. So I'm looking to provide an opportunity for someone to be able to live in the same unit or same floor as they conduct business. So this is what I'm looking to do to get this approval to, to accommodate this type of thing. I just feel that it's a something that they, that they need to look at and hopefully we can provide this type of thing. So we will give these professionals an opportunity to live and work in the same the same building. It's certainly safer for a a single woman to be able to conduct business in, in the same unit that she lives in. She doesn't have to worry about her clients going into a large office complex where there's a parking lot or a garage and trying to gain access to a building after hours or where there's a storm or inclement weather. So I just think that it's a thing of the future. The COVID is going to be here for a while and it'll be a while before the workplace goes back to a normal functioning office environment. So and I think Pasco Commons certainly lends itself to this concept because of already being residential with some of the apartments and condos that provide residential quarters for the community. And just think it's a time to see if we can get this done. So I'm asking you if we can. If you have any further questions, what I'm looking to do.
Thank you. Have you seen the memo that the town planner put together for us?
No, I didn't see it. No.
There is an item here which pardon my ignorance, I just don't know what it is. It says, if requested by the fire marshal, a Knox box shall be provided. I don't know what that is.
Yeah. I did see that and I did see that. I didn't know what, in fact, I talked to the fire marshal about that. And he didn't know what it was.
A Knox box is a, a box that the fire department would have a, a common key for it. And you would have a key inside that box so they could gain access without having to destroy your door.
All right, that makes sense. That's certainly easily accommodated.
The Knox is the name of the company that sells them. And they're only sold to fire departments because they're all common keyed.
Okay, that makes sense, yep.
The terms in the regulations is not a Knox box, but that's what it seems like is required. It's fire safety box or something along those lines. So I, I put that in there so we'll all know what we're talking about. So we'll leave it up to the discretion of the fire marshal, as long as he's comfortable that based on the multi-use of the space, they have access. I think we're okay. But the regs do require that he had that.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any members of the commission?
I have no, we, we talked about this in detail last couple of meetings. I'm good.
I understand his business plan.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the physical room here who would like to state something for the record? No takers. Is there anybody on the Zoom call who would like to, beyond the applicant, state something for the record that we should consider? Okay, no takers there. So it seems to me the commission is comfortable. We have a public hearing. I think the next step would be a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application PZ 2021-21 for a special use permit? 7A Pasco Drive to allow a 1,550 square foot residential unit and a 850 square foot office use in the same floor. The owner applicant is Renee DePuy.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, second by Frank. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. So the public hearing on this application is closed. I think we have a motion to approve prepared by our town planner. So if everybody feels set, it would be good to take it up. Is there someone who would like to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the application PZ 2021-21 for special use permit. 7A Pasco Drive to allow a 1,550 square foot residential unit and an 850 square foot office use on the same floor by our applicant Renee DePuy. The approval is granted and subject to the conformance with the application materials, as may have been modified by the commission. And the following conditions listed one through six on a memo from Mike Damato dated July 8th, 2021.
Do we have a second to that motion? Second by Frank? Motion is on the table. Could I have hands on those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
Motion is approved.
And you are set.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
The next new public hearing in, on our agenda is for PZ 2021-23. It's a special use permit for 69 Depot Street for an accessory apartment. My understanding from Mike is all the legal notice procedures about or to of the abutters was not completed in a timely fashion. So we can't act and we need to postpone this for two weeks. So could we get a motion to postpone or table the hearing and take it up at our next regular meeting, which I think is July, July 27?
I make a motion, we postpone the public hearing for application PZ 2021-23 for a special use permit, 69 Depot Street for an accessory apartment. Map 98, block 53, lot 24, zone R2. The applicant is Jacob Home Improvement, owner by Brian and John Vincent Picasneeden until our next scheduled meeting, which will be July 27.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Could we take a vote? All those in favor of postponing?
Aye.
That's unanimous. So that item will be on our next agenda. Our next item is PZ 2021-19. It's a text amendment application to the East Windsor zoning regulation, section 802.1 and 802.4. It's for a multifamily development district. The applicant is SJK Properties LLC. This one has had a lot of public comment and previous applications have not been, I'll say, everybody in sync and full consensus. So I'm wondering if with our chair absent and the fact that we have time to act on this, if everybody will be here on July 27 and if we'll have a full board then?
I think it's a great idea because if you get two-two, you could be in trouble.
That's my concern. And, but I want to make sure we'll have the full board on July 27. Everybody, no one has vacation. Okay. And I would propose that, I guess, do we need to, since we have?
You have 65 days from the date the public hearing is closed to issue a decision. So you don't have to do any action tonight. And there's no consent needed because we don't need an extension. So I would say that in the interim, you know, if there's certainly any other questions or anything that you guys have for me, you know, but
We don't have that consent from the applicant to do this.
And it's not open to? And it's not open to public comment anymore, so the only communication can be with the town staff.
I do have a question, and if we wanna discuss it now or till later, but I, I'd like to, a, a definition of what the uh, lot requirements are on our one, our two, and then our three zones, if you can either find that or get that for me.
Yeah, do you want me to put it together for something for the whole commission to have the next meeting, I mean, I can pull the regs, but I can also do a comparison for you, what would you, you work up? Does everybody else wanna see it or?
I think it's helpful to see it. We're not going to act tonight.
And I can send it out in the next packet.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't know the chair was not gonna be here.
No, we did not.
Yeah.
Unanticipated.
I saw a truck.
So, um, do we need a motion to?
You don't need one, you can do one if you want, but again, you're within your timeframe, so certainly make a motion to postpone decision to, till the next meeting, if that's more comfortable so everybody knows where.
Okay.
You stay here.
I'll make a motion that we uh, postpone uh, PZ twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, the text amendment application East Windsor zoning regulation, section eight oh two point one and eight oh two point four, multifamily district development, MFDD application of SJK Properties LLC until our next scheduled meeting, which is July twenty-seventh.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, seconded by Frank? All those in favor say aye, that's unanimous, so the decision
So sit up, why I, you have a consent. Have a good night.
Under other business? Don't have any other business, correct? Okay, we have no additional or new correspondence, you need to raise with us?
Uh, no, at this time, no.
Okay, so that takes us to our business meeting and the discussion regarding one ninety-eight South Main Street, Central AS LLC Plan Changes and DOT Comments.
I just wanna tee this up quick for Kim to kinda let you know how we got here, I don't know if this is customary for the commission or not. Um, but he had made a request to our office of some changes to this site and I felt that they were on the line of whether or not it was something we should do as staff, so I was more comfortable with him making this request to you. Our regulations do allow obviously staff to approve some administrative changes, but I wasn't sure on this one, so I, I asked him to come here so we could run it directly.
Good evening, Kim Koong, JR, Ruseon Associates. You may recall that Bill Esdean and I from Central AS LLC were here in March, actually you're here in February as well, and presented uh, the application, the site plan for one ninety-eight South Main Street for a multi-tenant uh, automotive repair workshops, such building, and we received uh, site plan approval on March ninth. And during those meetings, one of the issues that we discussed, if you remember, was the location of the driveway.
Yes.
Correct, so the initial plan looked like this. Uh, it showed the driveway up along the northern edge, uh, this little hatch mark is actually where the existing driveway uh, enters the property and it was more or less in line with that, that was where we originally proposed to put the driveway. Um, then during the course of the meetings, I believe it was Joe said, hey, you know, would you guys look at whether or not you can make it work so that the driveway lines up with the one opposing it across the street? So we came in at the, I believe, the last meeting, he showed the two alternatives, just showed that this one had a little bit of a, an S curve in it. Um, but based on the recommendations from the commission, um, we left it as with this, with the uh, the entrance further to the south than where the existing driveway is. Subsequently, we've gone to the DOT um, in accordance with the encroachment permit process. And they've commented on our plans and their main significant comment is with regard to the location of the driveway, of course. So their claim is um, that the proposed relocation of the driveway to the south will affect the state's curb line, which it will, no denying that, it's gonna affect their curb line. And their ability to effectively plow into the offset basin area and remove snow. Now you'll notice this little green thing here, there's an existing catch basin. And it's set back from the road about three feet, it's in one of those little, little divots.
Okay.
Offset catch basin, yeah. So, uh, what they are, commented and what they're requiring is if we proceed with our driveway at this location to the south in close proximity to this, where it will affect their ability to clear snow, they have required that we take and uh, remove this catch basin from its current location, take the curb line, redo the curb so that it runs straight across now and install a new catch basin out at the new curb location. Well, there's a cost associated with that, of course. And um, we actually, we did have, uh, Bill had his contractor, because they have started, started construction out there, put a, a cost proposal together. And at a minimum, it would be sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. And that's without um, taking into account if the state also requires us to mill and pave the patch in the pavement, which they oftentimes do, which would add additional cost to that. So my response to her was, well, how far away does our driveway need to be before we aren't going to be impacting your ability to plow the snow on that basin? And uh, ultimately they came back and said, well, the driveway's existing location is really the best configuration to properly maintain the stormwater and plowing operation. And they said they'd be okay with that change, but they understood, because I mentioned it to them, that we located it here based on the input of the commission. They said, well, if you, if you're gonna change it, just make sure we get something in writing that says that you're planning and zoning commission is okay with going back to the existing location. So as Mike mentioned, I, I brought this to his attention and requested, you know, can we do this as a staff approval? And he suggested that we take it back to the commission and that's, that's why we're here now. Now there's, there's really nothing in your zoning regulations that say when you put in the driveway, it has to be opposing the one across the street. You know, it was a recommendation, Joe brought it up, we, we understand there is an advantage to safety, to left turns and all that.
Expert on safe.
Yes, yes.
I'm sure you have very good research.
And, and I understand that, it is, as an engineer, I understand it's safe. However, is the impact really that much, if it was, I would have suspected that perhaps there would be something in your regulation that says opposing, you should put the driveways opposing each other. And if it was really a safety issue, I would also suspect the DOT would say, hey, you should have your driveway across from the one on the other side of the street.
I, I guess, I wonder driveway on the other side of the street, how heavy is it, like, driveway?
That is the, it's King's, King's liquor.
Much higher traffic than your
Yes, but they also have two curb cuts.
They're huge too.
Yeah, there's one wide one here and there's another wide one up to the north. So so really tonight, we're here asking, you know, for, for Bill's sake, you know, as it was just a recommendation at the time, you know, can we, what's your feeling on us going back to putting it where the existing driveway currently
Which is okay, to start with only upon our recommendation, you tried to accommodate us by putting it there.
Yes.
I, I don't see a problem with that, though, personally.
And, and then just give, we're hoping the simplest way to do that would be give Mike the authority to prove this as a staff, staff approval.
Other people feel?
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of Mike. Somebody to give approval.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that there's two curb cuts to enter that same location, I think changes things for me. If that were their only point of access, then you might say if somebody's already looking, that somebody's are trying to turn in here, they have an option to turn in the earlier driveway, rather than curb cut versus, you know, coming into that standoff position.
I mean, it was only a suggestion, it wasn't, uh, I, I don't remember it as being a topic of discussion, really.
And we never, we never mentioned previously that there were two, two curb cuts for that, I think that makes a difference.
But sitting on this side of the table, costs on that side of the table shouldn't affect your decision.
Right. Correct.
But I agree with Mike, though, there's a huge opening in the liquor store, there's multiple ways to get out of there, so I'm okay with it.
I also wonder if the hours of a liquor store are different, the hours of when people would be coming to, for automotive repair. Because if it was me, I would be dropping my car off in the morning and hopefully picking it up around noon time. And I would guess not being a person who's ever been to that package store, um, that there isn't huge traffic in the morning, but that's how I do my car repairs, I like to just get it over with and
Sounds, what do you mean, what's Mike?
Do you need?
Yeah, I, I think that, if you can give me some direction, basically, because it is a modification, I think put a motion together, that would be ideal. It is the state right away, and so they are fine with the alternate location, but it's a bit more of a change than what we would normally approve administratively, so for the purposes of consistency, I just wanted to, because it was a modification that the commission ultimately requested, I feel better having it come this way. If you're comfortable with that, get a revised plan for our office.
We're comfortable, Joe's the expert, we don't have the advantage of his
Yeah, unfortunately.
We can give you more work.
Why I'm here. I just didn't want one of you to drive by when it was built and say, wait, the driveway is in the wrong spot.
It would be Joe who would notice.
Yeah, and if Percy's not here, but, you know, that's fine, so I'll, I'll get, I'll work with him, we'll get a revised plan together.
Does somebody wanna make that motion?
I make a motion that we allow staff the uh, authority to make a modification for the uh, driveway location on uh, one ninety-eight South Main Street for occupied by Central AS LLC.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Frank? Okay, all those in favor say aye or a rea-
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All yours, Mike.
Do you have anything for the visiting session?
No.
I think we can accept a motion to adjourn at seven thirteen PM.
I like it here. I make a motion to be adjourned.
Second, Frank seconded, all those in favor?
We can go watch the All-Stars.